Introduce our first select woman, Mary Mitter. She's going to be presenting her budget. I'd like to introduce the superintendent of schools, Mr. Stephen Macchio. And he'll be presenting his budget. Mr. Hartenstein is here. If you have any questions on the WPCA, we will be hearing from the fire department. And the police department has said they don't have anything to say right now. Everything's going great. So at this time, I would like to introduce my board to you. And that would be Erin Pertor from the N., and she's our secretary. And then it's Mr. Steven Garick, who's an alternate. Conrad Ullah, that is an alternate. David Wallace, that's a board member. Mr. Gary Fisher was a board member. Mr. Moriarty, a board member. And Mr. Phil Green, a board member. And I'm Jane Slater, the chairman of the Board of Finance. But at this time, if you have any -- Mrs. Mitter will be giving the budget. But if you do have questions, we're going to ask that you step up to the podium, state your name, and what your question is. Thank you very much. Mrs. Mitter?
Let's see if I can do this well. Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to try to keep this brief tonight as I've done the first public hearing. And everyone should have a handout. Did everybody get a handout of what's in the bag? Perfect. At the first public hearing on March 28th, I presented a budget increase of $49,107.50. That was for the general government with an overall increase of $69,693.50. That includes the general government, debt service, and the library. As I stated at the first public hearing, there were adjustments that still needed to be made and to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. On April 3rd, the Board of Selectmen met and made adjustments to the budget, which resulted in cuts of $75,837. With these additional cuts, the general government budget is down $26,729.50. Debt service is up $16,660. And the library is up $3,926. That's an overall decrease from last year's approved budget of $6,143.50. I'd actually like to have Tammy Rossi, she's our assessor in town, to come up to explain the changes and the grand list and how that may, you know, affect the taxes. Mrs. Rossi?
Well, Mary asked me to come and briefly go over a couple of things that are affecting our overall list. Primarily, it's the adjustments that we made due to Public Act 1645 with the foundations. Currently, this grand list, we're looking at 53 properties that were adjusted, which resulted in, it's 3.3, specifically $3,347,360 in assessment dollars, which currently equates to, we use our current mill rate, about $113,000 in tax dollars. Each time we adjust a property, which were required to by legislation during, outside of our revaluation cycle, we're looking at about $65,000 to $70,000 in assessment dollars in reduction, which, as you add them up, it increases quickly. With our current grand list, one mill equates $781,614 in assessment dollars. Again, we're talking assessment dollars. So if you look at that in representation of what we've adjusted off and the current mills, we're down about 4.2 mills, which would be added to our grand list. So we wouldn't be looking at this reduction. These would be, we would be above, we'd be higher. But each time you adjust down, and I've got people coming in, sometimes weekly, with the foundation issue, you lose that term, lose leap up. It's difficult because we're pulling down as we're growing. You know, we're getting the properties coming on. When we're growing, we're still reducing. So it's kind of a, call it an uphill battle. You work so hard to increase your grand list, to increase our revenues, overall revenues when we're applying a mill rate to that. It's just, it's working opposite. So in addition to the shortfalls with the state revenues that are being taken away from the towns, this is also a shortfall. So if you're -- it's not easy. It's not an easy task. So if you're looking at where it's bringing it down, there's, in a nutshell, that is it. That's our biggest pull. And it's not, there's no light at the end of the tunnel at this point. I mean, currently, like I say, the 15 list, we had 10. 16 list, we added 28 more, so a total of 38. This year, we added 18. We had actually three removed because they were replaced and repaired. Soon as they come up, being repaired and put their right back on. But we're still, you know, 3.3 million in assessment dollars. It's a big number. So in light of that, it's now 706. And the Bruins are at game seven. So we've got to go. Kind of nice.
Thanks, Tammy.
Did anybody have any questions from them? Do you? Tammy?
Can you just tell me how many houses in our city have been?
53.
53.
Currently, 53. That's for the 17 list. We'll have more next year.
65,000 and 70,000, what did you give? That was?
That's an average reduction per property. 65 to 70, kind of a midway. Some are more, some are less, depending on the property.
Nobody else for questions? Thank you.
Now, if the school is ready, would you like to give the news, Mike? And just as they hand out?
So there was a handout in the back for everyone? And I'm going to follow the same pattern. We'll just quickly go through sort of where we started from before. But before we do that, you know, this revised budget, I do need to thank all of the Board of Education members for digging in deep again, administrators, members of all the various departments. Special thanks to my business director, Diane Peters. But super special thanks has to go out to my administrative assistant, Christine Marinelli. I'm not saying this just because I forgot that it was administrative assistant today. I got a lot of making up to do on that one. But special thanks to Christine for that as well. We are going to present the budget this evening that has been through many different revisions. I was on the phone even today with Lisa Baxter, town finance officer, for insight and assistance regarding the various different ways that we were looking at the budget. And I think that while this budget is now coming in as 0% increase, it still absolutely does meet the mission of the Stafford Public Schools. And that's about preparing all of the kids, all of our students, to be productive, meaningful, and responsible adults as they enter into an incredibly competitive global society. And again, it's about all of the different kids. As you go through the presentation, you know, a lot of the presentation is exactly the same as the last time that Dr. Smotis presented it. So pages two through five are pretty much identical. For anyone that's seeing it for the first time, I'm not going to go through all of those specific line items there. But if you have any questions at all, feel free to call my office. We will absolutely answer any of your questions and give you any clarification that's necessary. Again, as you go through pages two through five. The first real change, and I bring it up because it's about enrollment, because you just did hear about houses and things being built in the town. And our enrollment does continue to increase, even from, even the last public hearing. We have more kids that are coming to school now than there were coming to school before. So as of April 2nd, 2018, the district's enrollment is up an additional three. So we're at 1,545. And that's not just the students that are attending schools in Stafford, but that does include the outplace facility students, the state technical schools, the VOLAC schools, as well as the magnet schools. That's basically the only change that you had on page six. So for page seven, there is some change because Stafford does have an increased level of need. Since the last time we presented, our numbers have actually increased even more. We have 26.5% of the kids in Stafford Public Schools are actually receiving either special education or Section 504 services. That special education and Section 504, those services are legally mandated under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. That is actually up about 1.5%. It's, we had 10 additional students that are either new referrals that have been identified for special education services or are new to the town. So I talked about that increasing enrollment. Some of those students that are moving into town, they come in with a pretty hefty individualized education plan. And we're legally mandated to follow it, you know, until we can collect some data to make adjustments to those plans. So our level of student need does continue to increase along with our enrollment. The second bullet talks about our percentage of students for free and reduced-priced meals. And that number has actually increased up to 40%. We were at 34% at the last public hearing. We're up to 40%. And the reason behind that is because we now have the addition of the Medicaid-free and reduced eligibility program. So we do receive some reimbursement from it regarding the state. But again, so 40% of the kids that come to school are qualified for some type of free and reduced-priced meal. In alignment with that, the five schools all are eligible for Title I funds. We do bring in just under $200,000 as part of Title I federal funds. And that does, again, offset the percentage for the low-income families. And we already could talk about the 504 students and the special education students. We can talk a little bit about excess costs when we get to some of the spreadsheets at the end, because I think there is special note that needs to happen there. Our excess cost, basically, when we are, for the amount of money that we're spending on special education students, whether it be tuition or transportation, when we go over a certain threshold amount, four and a half times what our per pupil expenditure happens to be, the state will give us back some money. Now, they don't give us back 100% of every dollar we go over, because that would only be the right thing to do. They give us back a certain percentage of it. So they give us back about 70%. So anytime we spend more than about $78,000 on a student for special education, we're going to get back a piece of that money. Again, not the full 100%, but we're going to get back a piece. And I bring that up now because you're going to see, one of the reductions that we took was we really looked at that and we put in for our second installment calculation for that excess cost piece. So that's going to bring us to the actual dollars. So this particular budget does reduce all the way down to 0%. You can look at, on page eight, it will give you according to the specific salary line, or, excuse me, the specific line items. The changes that exist from last presentation to this presentation, under the 100 salaries total, there is a change of about $101,000. And those changes are associated with, we actually had an increase in a need for some additional world language teaching positions. But we did make a decrease in terms of, we talked previously about a music position that we were adding into the budget. We've reduced that down. We've had some resignations that have come in. We've looked at pre-K tuition and tuition for one of our special education students or for a special education student who comes to us from Eastford. So that was where the changes were taken from that particular area. For the benefits total, you're going to see a large change, now showing a difference of $208,931.30. We've reduced down further our benefits in terms of, we originally had $100,000 that we had reduced from previous year's budgets. In talking with Lisa Baxter and looking at the insurance funds closer, we actually, we had our public hearing on a Wednesday. We had a telephone conference with our insurance company the following Tuesday. Mary Mitter was there, Lisa Baxter was on the phone. There was a number of different people in the room. Diane was there, we had Lori from my office. So the insurance fund continues to do very well. And under sort of Lisa's tutelage, she thought that we could actually look at doing things a little bit different. So we're taking $210,000 out of that benefits line. The only other areas that you're going to see differences are, we're in the transportation, tuition, and other services. And that's all directly related to those excess cost reimbursements. So there's just under $126,000. It's $125,948.64 was the change that we made in terms of the 500 line item. And again, that's all associated with the excess costs. I tried to make it as clear as we can on page 11, because it will show you the iterations of the budget. Now, I've only been in town six weeks total, according to the abacus outside of my office, and we slide a beat every single week. But we originally started off with a $28,146,163.15, to which, before I started, we took those initial savings in health insurance, some additional savings in terms of the high school, middle school reconfiguration. And then we actually had some expenditures placed back in. We started off at 1.49%. We had met the Monday before that first public hearing. And again, this is about us trying to be as transparent as possible with, when we recognize there are funds that we can be removing from our budget, that are going to not affect our priorities, our initiatives, and are still going to be able to allow us to meet that mission and vision that I talked about first, we decided to reduce those before ever coming to the first public hearing. That brought us down to the 0.98% that we presented the first time. Following the public hearing, I received the unfortunate news that, totally understanding as well, in terms of what we just heard about the revenues from the town, that our budget would be reduced an additional $271,736.64. So those were the changes that we made. I talked about the additional savings in terms of the health insurance, the adjustments in the salary accounts regarding the resignations and the reduction in the staffing from the music teacher position. Unfortunately, we did add a little bit back in, because we did need to meet the needs of the students to have a foreign language teacher up at the high school. And that was from, going from 0.6 to 0.8. And then the excess cost adjustments that are based on the second installment moving forward. And that brings us down to the 0%. I will say that the music teacher being reduced, you know, that was one that, in previous year's budgets, there was a full-time teacher there. So we had put in to add back in that full-time teacher. And we do recognize that we're not going to be able to do that in order to meet the 0% mandate that we were given. But at the same time, we do believe it's a step in the right direction. You know, this is going to allow that plan program to happen in the fourth and fifth grade, where currently, right now, it just wasn't able to. It's a step in the right direction. It doesn't get us all the way back, but it does move us in the right direction. You know, the reductions that were made in terms of the $271,000 plus, they could have resulted in a number of staffing positions. And I'm just incredibly thankful and fortunate that we had that insurance conversation phone call set up with that Tuesday following the public hearing. Because without those reductions, or without the ability and Lisa's guidance in terms of what we could do regarding those insurance reductions, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, three, four, five certified staff members that we'd be losing. And that directly impacts, if you go back to page two, our priorities regarding maintaining staffing needs and meeting the needs of the students. The very last page in terms of staffing adjustments, the only real changes on that particular page, I won't take you through all of them, but there's really the three big bucket priorities that I talked about last time. And that was the middle school, high school reorganization proposal that we have. There was a number of staff members that were needed as part of that. Again, those were all met through our shifting, through retirements, through transfers between the schools, through assignment changes. The second big bucket was the staffing adjustments necessary for us to bring in the Stafford Learning Center proposal. That's the special education program that I talked about previously. And that's the, again, better meet the needs of the individual students and to reduce the number of students that we will require outplacement. Because again, every time we outplace a student, every time we tell a student, "We can no longer educate you here in Stafford," that's $90,000. And again, I took you through those excess cost numbers for a reason. $90,000 is clearly more than $78,000. I don't get that $12,000 back from the state. Don't give me a portion of that. So if I can make some savings there by having those programs here in town, that's cost savings for us in the future. And all of those changes regarding that Stafford Learning Center proposal, again, as a reminder, those are cost-neutral savings with potential cost savings moving forward as it continues to grow. Again, it's a small step in the right direction. And the other bucket that's not listed here was obviously our accreditation process that we're going through. We have our NEAS accreditation process that's, we're in self-study right now at the high school. We have our early childhood programs going through their NACI accreditation. So obviously, we need to do what we need to do in order to meet those needs so that those programs can continue to have their accreditation. The only other item that I've added on here, I didn't know, obviously, the music reduction, is, we did not talk about it at the last public hearing, but I want to begin conversation in the town with the Board of Education. And again, I don't have dollars allocated in this. This would be up to me to sort of find the dollars or to come up with other funding sources in order to be able to have a conversation about the addition of a school resource officer. That's a school-wide, district-wide school resource officer. It's at the point now where I want to begin conversation. I don't want to go out and hire somebody tomorrow. I think it's incredibly vital that we have a strong connection with a school resource officer. It's not about just having police presence in the town or in the schools, but it's about that person's ability to educate the kids on what their police presence means in the schools. And I'm talking about, again, district-wide. I've seen incredibly effective models occur. I've seen them happen from the elementary level all the way up to the high school level. And I've seen the relationship that that person can have and the strength and collaboration that you can have with the police department as part of it. For us, at the Board of Education level, we're in the very initial stages of just, we want to have a conversation. I think in the past, they maybe went a little too fast and started talking dollars before they really knew maybe what they actually needed or actually wanted. We want to just start to have some dialogue regarding it. So I bring that up and I put that in there. That's the only other change regarding that. But again, that would be about us finding funding sources, external. Or, worst-case scenario, I have to find internal funding sources to make it happen. But I would not be coming back to you asking for additional funds to make that happen. And that is all of the changes as part of the Board of Education budget.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Comments?
I'm not a Bruins fan, but I think the Yankees might be on tonight. I'm sorry, guys, I'm a Yankees fan. The evil empire, right?
They're the other side of the river.
Yes, we do have a question. Mr. Richards?
I have a question, Jane. I just have some comments. You want me to go to the microphone? Can you hear me up here?
I don't know. Can you hear her? Yeah, okay.
Basically, first and foremost, I want to thank First Selectman Mary Mitter. For her first time, early in the job, I think she did an outstanding job with the budget. I think she understands that the revenue issue is a problem statewide. And the budget being lower than last year, I think she even understands that it may have to go down further yet as things change. I want to thank the Board of Ed for bringing it down to zero. But they also should be prepared to go even deeper in the level cut. I mean, you can sit there and shake your head and all you want.
They can go any deeper, Mark.
But the point being is, is that budget, it doesn't matter whether you want one mill, two mils, six mils. If the people don't approve it, it doesn't happen.
That's true.
So unless you're going to approach it like Governor Malloy and his henchmen, and they're going to start adding fees onto tires and we'll have tolls on the town roads and a few other things, then you better consider that. So again, Mary, I want to thank you and the Board of Selectmen for looking at the economizing part before you start looking at the tax part. And I think that's what both sides of the budget need to do. I don't want to work against the budget. But if you try to go for too much, then that's what's going to happen. And I think both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen could probably even find greater savings if they both did an HRO, to find out what positions do we have in town, what do we need, what we don't need. I understand with the Board of Ed, the need for educators. They have to have the qualifications to teach the kids what they need to know. But that doesn't also apply to just support staff. And I don't begrudge anyone a job, but you can't buy what you can't afford. Companies, when they start to lose money, their products aren't in demand, they have to do the same thing. For the last decade, our enrollment in the schools went down, but they all still needed more. Now it's going up, and we're going to manage to get it flatline. But I'm telling you that the revenue situation is not going to improve right away. It's going to get worse. So we should be prepared that we may have to make deeper cuts. Nobody that works in this room is going to go to work tomorrow and say, "My taxes are going up three mils. I need a 10% raise starting in July." Well, after they get through laughing at you and then throw you out the front door and say, "Here, it's a blue slip to go with it," then you'll understand. So again, Mary, thank you for the due diligence and also for the usual questions.
All right. First of all, Erin, could you put on that paper, the mill rate?
Yeah, it's on the front page.
Even with the budget and both the parties, as Mr. Richards has said, going down, as far as they can go, the mill rate is still probably going to go up 1.8, if not a little more. Let's hope it doesn't, but it looks that way. Mr. Walsh, you wanted to say something?
Yes. I think these were incredibly sincere efforts by both the school and the town to control costs. And I think also, they were very responsible. Yeah, they were very responsible in the sense that people looked at what they could give up without cannibalizing the town. Now, the two things that are important to understand here is, first of all, there was a system built up since the 1950s where the state contributed money to the municipalities to help them out with road projects and infrastructure in general. Educational equalization grants went to every town. Everybody adjusted their budgets and learned to live on that basis. The 1.8 increase that is reflected here has nothing to do with us or either the town or the schools. They held the line to basically zero, no increases at all. And they gave back a large amount of money from last year's budget in order to get through the rest of this year. The problem we have is entirely caused by the state. And if you read the newspapers and you look at what real towns do in the real world, they've already sent out supplementary tax bills. I would say the average increase is about 2 and 3/4% in the total budget in most of the towns around us. I've been averaging this out, I've been looking at it. And I know in summers, there's tremendous bitterness over the supplementary tax bill. First of all, and secondly of all, rather, I don't believe you can cut below the current year's budget, because there was no loss in students, there was an increase. And under state law, you can't decrease the budget from the previous year. If you look at what Mary gave up, they sacrificed in practically every area, major projects that were listed in the beginning, things we need to do, they're going to fall apart. Infrastructure and some of the town buildings will fall apart if there isn't corrections made. The lights at the high school are only going to last so many more years, and that's the end of it. The reality is that this was a responsible, absolutely to the bone budget by everybody. There was an effort. We had almost total agreement from the beginning that, on the board also, I believe I can say for all of us, when we sent this budget out, we said, "This is the best anyone can do without destroying the local community." Last thing to think about, if you look at all the money you put into your schools over the years, you look at, for example, the track in that facility up there. I used to be, for 20 years, I was chairman of the Board of Recreation. We repaved that field, we repaired it, we developed it, we fenced it, we did 100 different things to it. People use it for all kinds of things now. If, to save a small amount of money in a time of crisis, not caused by us, caused by Harford, we go back and reduce that sum even more. You cannibalize all of your contributions and all of the sacrifices you made in the past, that's a real shame. And all it's going to do is send us backwards, further and further backwards. And I want to leave you with one final point that I learned about last week. There is no shortage in the budget, the state budget, this year. It's a fake. It's a political fake. They put $1.2 billion into the rainy day fund this year, money that could have been sent out to the towns to make it unnecessary for us to increase the tax rate at all. And they didn't do it. And why not? Because eight years ago, there was a decision made that they wouldn't count taxes taken in from hedge funds. that they wouldn't count taxes taken in from hedge funds because the amount fluctuated too much in the budget. So they would never include that in the budget and the lines for, you know, payments coming in. So what have you got? You don't have that anymore. This isn't a projection. It may not come true. This is money they have in their hands. If anybody is dissatisfied with this tax rate, they should take their arguments to the place where it belongs, in Hartford. Ask them why they won't give out the rainy day fund for this year to local towns and communities like ours that are struggling to make it. And if you look at the tax base and everything in town, the lack of big industry, it's going to hurt our people who own houses and have to pay real estate taxes more than it will in towns where they can pass that off to the commercial sector. So I would say, if people don't support this budget, they're cutting their own throats. You're going backwards. You're destroying the community. You can't go lower legally under, I don't believe, in the school budgets. And I think that, you know, that's what people have to understand. It isn't us. It's the people in Hartford who put us in this spot.
And the only comment I have is, by law, you can't go below what the school got last year, and they're actually only asking for zero. We can't go any lower than that. That's what I meant when I was shaking my head. Um, Mr. Goodell, you have something?
Yes. I don't know who to address this to, but two and a half years ago, we had a big solar kick here in Stafford Springs. I have yet to see from the town or from the school budgets or anything a decrease in electric bills or oil payments or anything else. So where is that money? Does anyone know?
I'll let Mr. Fisher answer that one.
The way the solar works, it is in fact reducing the electricity use of the Board of Education in the town. When this was set up, there was a loan payment for the solar rates. The budgets for electricity were flatlined at the amount that they had paid the last year that they bought electricity. That money is being used to pay the note. So their electric payments are not going up, they're flatlined until the note is paid off. But just an example, a few months ago, the middle school got a $14 electric bill for one month. So it is working. It's just that the money has to come. We have to pay the note. So it's still in their budget. They're just not using it for electricity. It's going to pay the note.
So what about the oil bill? That didn't go down at all?
Uh, I talked to the building supervisor a couple of weeks ago, and it didn't track down. Uh, as cold as the winter was, a colder winter this year than it was last year, they have to use less oil. They still have some issues with the geo, but, um, they use less oil in a colder winter than they did last year.
Okay. So I can expect next year, if the electricity goes up by the power company and the oil goes up, that we should see a better increase. Am I correct?
A better increase. What do you mean?
A better increase from the solar and the geothermal.
Well, the solar is going to produce what it produces. Uh, and the electricity is...
I understand that. But if your cost of one has gone up and your cost to produce the geo and the solar doesn't cost you anymore as far as maintenance or any repairs, there should be more of a savings.
Well, they're always going to pay for...
I know you're going to pay your loan. That isn't going to change.
Right. The solar rates are making almost 80 to 90% of the electricity to the municipalities. So the only part of the electricity cost that go up are the part that the town still has to buy from the utility. Because we're not making 100%. And that was never going to be the outcome, to pay for 100% of the electricity of the town.
But I thought it was a very minuscule amount when it was sold to us as a pound.
Yeah, no, we're...we didn't want to overbuild the solar because we didn't, we wanted to make sure that the solar was matched the consumption.
I would like in the future...
We can still backfill with more solar to get to 100%.
I would like, in the future, to have that put out either in a newsletter or in the mail or something to the citizens of Stafford. And I'll keep track of the electric going up and the oil for myself.
I mean, you can talk to the town about getting those reports.
It's a good idea. I think everybody would like to see those reports.
I would like to see it do well. That's what I'm asking.
Well, it is. It's doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mike. Next speaker. I'm not as old as these guys.
I think you are going to have to hold the mic.
You got as loud as you can.
Oh, yeah, you can take the sun if you want. Oh, we have to turn this off. All right.
My name is Mike Pfeifer. I live 159 Crookett Street Road. Uh, I want to add my compliments to First Selectman's, the best budget I've seen since I've been here. And I have no bone to pick with the school board. But a few things that we've got to start recognizing. Crookett Street Road is a dirt road. I've lived there eight years, and I don't have a problem with the dirt part. But every year after the first rain, I'm driving through tank traps every day. The city comes out, they throw some gravel in, they grade it. First rain, it's gone. And they'll come out a second time and the same thing. It's happened that way for eight years since I've lived here. Now, I don't know. I assume it's budget constraints. Part of the problem is the way they go about it. And I'd like to talk to Mitch Doolan about that because what they're doing, and I pointed this out a couple of years ago, certainly isn't working. It lasts about, to the first rain, that's it. It's gone. And I see that our budget in that area is constrained, as it is in all areas. But not only do we have a lot of other things that work about, concerned about, we have a lot of other problems in this town that we have not addressed. And the school is doing well, getting what they need, getting on everything they want. But there's a lot of people in this town are not getting what they should get in the way of services. But I just want to point out that there are a lot of other things to talk about that's strictly the school. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Mr. Pfeifer, you're absolutely right. And there are. Unfortunately, with the budget the way it is and with the state not giving us much money, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, if you are correct.
It's the gravel vote.
There are a lot of issues in town that we'd love to take care of. The buildings, the roads.
You have to show them.
Just can't do it. Can't do it all. Yes?
Jane, if I could make a quick comment, and I think... Hey? My name is Donna Wright, and I live at 95 West Stafford Road. And I think that John Locke, we would like to invite Mr. Pfeifer to the Citizens Advisory Committee because if he has ideas or questions or comments, we love to discuss. We'd like to hear from everybody. We have a suggestion box that's out and about. And we would welcome anybody and everybody to talk with us. That's why we're there. I think John and Mary would agree.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And if I can put a plug in, 300th anniversary is coming up next year for staffers. So we're actively soliciting ideas from the community to make it the best anniversary we've ever had.
Thank you very much. You have your invitations, Pfeifer.
Hold on. Nope.
Any other comments? Mr. Walsh, is that it? Sorry. Chief Walsh, is that you'd like to talk?
Normally, I just stand up here and yell, but I figured I'd actually use the microphone tonight. First of all, I'd like you to actually start by commending the First Selectman and the Board of Finance for working on a horribly tough year. Uh, and I think that, in reference to an earlier comment about solar from Mr. Goodell, I would like to just advise that the solar that we're generating at the firehouse now has probably taken our electricity cost down about 70% from where it was before. We were spending about $17,000 a year at the firehouse yearly for electricity. We're down to six. So there has been some real saving there. What I would like to do, though, is, for those that may have a question about how much we actually spend on various things, I'd like to put it to perspective this way. Last year, we responded to 1,071 calls for service. We were allocated $201,000 for a budget. So if you take that number and you divide it by the number of calls we had, that allocates $187 per call. And that $187 per call also includes all the mandates that we have for testing, all the mandates we have for certifications, all of our building expenses. That's $187 per incident if I send one guy and one car or four major pieces of apparatus. I would challenge people who know about the commercial industry and start a truck and run a truck on a job for $187. That's the value that you're getting. Uh, we have had a conversation numerous times about paid personnel. Right now, we're not doing that, but we are going to have to look at that somewhere down the road, probably sooner than later. Because when you get into the three and a half to four calls a day, which is pretty much an average right now, that's a strain on the volunteers. Last Sunday, we had seven incidents. I don't know how many Chief Lucia had, but we all have our days. Some days, you'll go two or three, you have maybe one. And then you get a day you have eight or nine. And it's not uncommon to have simultaneous calls occurring in town at any one given time. And we struggle with that for personnel and response. We're holding our own, but I don't know how long we're going to be able to continue to do that. But again, I would like to thank both of the boards for their patience and their compassion when it came to our budget request this year. And thank you all for supporting us.
I asked Chief Lucia to speak, but he said that anything Chief Walsh said, he would go along with.
I do have one comment though, as a tax rate.
All right, but he does have something to say. Good, thank you.
It's based on the fire department. Can everybody hear me? I don't think I can hear this. Uh, Tammy brought up a good point, and I want to talk about that today because I went to a risk management. We're in big trouble. We're a big group. Chief Walsh, he mentioned a thousand calls. Those thousand calls are based on fires and EMS calls, which are through the roof. And he's correct. He'll run seven calls. Wesley's running seven calls. I have five calls. Poor Alex. Chief Moore over here with the ambulance. He's got that. We only got three ambulances, and we're lucky if we can get all three out sometimes because we have something called. Last weekend, I was on ambulance duty myself. One ambulance went to Rockville, one went to Hartford. I was in the Hartford call, and we had to fend on both of them. So our call volume, I assume, you should have seen everything that's going up. But the hidden giant that's coming and it's going to raise its head right now, and we only see it at taxpayers' level with the reduction, is crumbling foundations. I don't go to sleep at night worrying about, because I know my foundation is probably there, and I haven't had it tested yet, but my house is in that age group. And the biggest thing is when that tone goes off one of these nights because I have a house that collapses. How am I going to handle that? We haven't even addressed the proper equipment we're going to need to put on our apparatus to handle this. Somebody's going to be trapped in a building. We haven't even thought of preparing for this. The risk management level, I'm in big trouble because a lawsuit is probably going to come to me because, don't forget, we are not the town, the Stafford Fire Department, nor is West Stafford. We are private entities. We are the first do. We are the responsibility for that. I have many guys I've got to train because now we're talking about confined space training, which we haven't been addressing because we only take care of the bare necessities. First aid and fire, that's what we do. Now we have confined space. Now we have to look at, how are we going to support loads? Where are we going to get a crane to lift something off? We have started in the background with all our fundraisers to start purchasing equipment because I know in the back, in the back of my mind, it's coming sooner than later. We have started buying jackets, which we carry on the new squad. We have airbags, which we carry on the new squads. We have struts. We need to start putting money aside or get a good committee going because those 53 houses are 53 houses this year, and I guarantee by next year, it'll be 253. Munson, Wales, Brimfield, they're just finding out about this disaster. And to the superintendent, you've got a couple of new additions in schools. Don't be surprised if you don't have a crumbling problem yourself. And you're in my district, and I don't want to respond to a crumbling school collapse. That's for sure. We've all seen the collapse on Main Street. What happened with the snow load, that's what you're looking when the foundation fails, except that everything's going to go into the foundation. So I just want everybody to think about that. Yeah, I don't want to see your taxes go up. Believe me, I don't want it to go up. But we're going to have to find money somewhere, and nobody's addressing that at the state level at all. They don't even want to know anything. And most of you probably, if you have read anything lately, you probably saw your 10% surcharge coming because the insurance companies don't want to pay for this either. So you're going to get an increase that way. That's all I want to say. That's a big problem that's going to hit Stafford, but not just Stafford. We're not alone. It's everybody in this area.
Thank you. And it is something we have to think about and prepare for. Are there any other comments? There are other budgets down there. If anybody has a question on it, we basically have people here that can answer them for you. No, I don't think there's any other comments or questions. So if there isn't, I think we'll put it closer in this second public hearing. And our meeting, the Board of Finance meeting, is Monday night. And at that time, we'll be putting our budget over to a town meeting to go for a referendum. And let's hope it passes.
If it doesn't, is danger to send me a supplemental building?
Could be. Could be. So thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much. So this meeting is for both quarters. And Mr. Bagley is not here, and he is asked to have Mr. Shuck present. So I will indicate a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor? Mr. Shuck is a member of the audience.
Yes.
A member of the court.
I second.
Steve, make the motion.
No, I'm not seated. I'm not seated. What I said was, I don't think you need a motion to Brian Arden.
That's right. You're not seated. That's right.
Don't listen.
Okay. So I guess I still need a motion, even if it's a thousand... Not by you. No.
Chuck is not seated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Most of the maiden's having a different Chuck seat. You're seated as a member of the board this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, everybody have the minutes in front of them? They're right here if we need them. Do you need a copy?
Yes, of course.
I move acceptance of the minutes of April 9th as recorded.
I'll second that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed? Okay, so now it's discussion on action of the budget, which actually, we're going to be meeting Monday night, so a lot of that discussion can be for that. But Mr. Richens is incorrect. We cannot lower the school budget anymore than zero. It's at zero now. So if the budget does not pass, everything, everything, everything is coming out of the town. Everything we have to cut will be cut from the town. That's the way it goes. We've already done our cuts to the board of it. And kind of why I wanted it to be, not to be done that way, I wanted to wait till the referendum, and if we had to make a cut, I was going to do half and half so that nobody would be hurt too badly. But it's not the way it's going to go. It's going to go the whole town. So, and I know that Mrs. Midda has said, if that happens, people will lose their positions, their jobs.
Jane, I just, I wanted to pass along a message from Lisa. I spoke with her a few times today, and she asked me to let you all know that she is going to make every effort to attend Monday night's meeting. She probably won't be able to. If she can't, she wants to teleconference in. She wants to discuss with you all different things about cash reserves, different things on the budget that she might see moving around to help out with.
Okay, Lisa and I have had a couple of long conversations, but I do understand.
She just wanted you all to know that she will be either in attendance or at least on the phone to discuss things with you Monday night.
That scares me. That scares me though, because she's not really supposed to be out in public, but.
Most likely she'll be over the.
Hopefully she'll have a mask and everything else on, but, okay. So anyhow, that would be wonderful because we do need her expertise. And she's the, she's the one that kind of saved the school when she came up with the insurance idea, so. You know, so if there's anybody that can come up with a plan, it would be Lisa, and hopefully she'll come up with a good one so that the town doesn't lose positions if we have to cut. And the best scenario is it passes and we don't have to do another thing.
It's not just, it's not just positions.
I'm sorry?
It's not just positions. It'll be a lot of things that'll have to get.
Oh, it is.
At the end of the day, one of the things we talked about was presenting a united front to.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We were going to present a united front to the town from the board that this was the best possible thing that we could possibly do.
The only thing we can.
So how do we, how do you propose that we do that, that the town hears that this was the best that we think we could possibly do? There's nothing left. How do we do that?
Well, I can tell you right now, I have one idea, one, and I'm open to anything, okay? But the one idea I had is, believe it or not, it's the school that really helps us get a lot of things passed because they reach so many more of the younger people, the people that aren't necessarily voting. But if they know it's something important and it's their own children, they will get out and they will vote. So if the PTOs and the athletic boosters and, you know, all of this stuff, okay, all of these people, these different groups of people that are involved with the school, will get the word to get out there and vote. And we ourselves just keep talking about it and keep it open and just tell people that's the best budget that we can come up with. We didn't have a huge audience tonight, but hopefully they'll go back and tell people. Other than that, that's my one idea. Does anybody have any other ideas? And I have a united front.
In alignment with your idea, just to let you know, I've already spoken with three of the five schools' PTOs in terms of budget presentation.
Good.
And part of that explanation is not just my budget, but an explanation of the revenue side of the budget. Now with, I received Lisa's, you know, Stafford Take Note Then Vote piece, so I'll incorporate this as a piece of it. We did a mailing to all families as part of the school system prior to tonight's meeting. Clearly, it didn't work because I didn't get that many more people here.
I will tell you, a lot of it had to do with the weather.
Yeah, well, I don't think it was all the Bruins. I'll put it that way.
That came to the schools too, right, not tonight.
Yeah, so, you know, we had a lot of different functions that were happening, but we are continuing to try to push out information, newsletters, updates, everything's on the website, so.
And from the selectmen's office, the same thing can happen, even a little postcard or have it on Facebook or something.
We did that last time, and we're planning on doing it again.
Good.
We have the budget out on the website. I tweeted it out last time. I, you know, yeah, the fire departments, we can see if there's something they can get out there for their people. They have a large, you know, following.
Right.
So we absolutely will do whatever we can to do this.
Well, Rick, I think the Staffordville Fire Department's probably going to be out there trying to get people to vote.
Yeah, normally it's brought up at monthly meetings when the vote is.
Mary, is there any way we could have like a letter, either put in the newspaper, all of us signing it, just a brief statement that, you know, what's at stake, and if we've done everything we can do to balance the budget, if everybody signed on.
Sure. Yeah, what I was going to say is we could, Beth is very good about asking us for our budget information to post on the town's website as well, but we could share with her the letter we sent home to parents that had more information, kind of summarized the process we went through, gave them the adjustments that we made, so we could share that. But I think that that's really helpful if people, they need to be able to understand why the mill rate's going up as much as it is when everybody's at zero. They just don't get it, even people that work with this all the time. So it's, that's, it's explaining that in a way that everybody can understand, that, you know, the revenue side, so Mr. Walsh did a great job.
I would think in today's day and age, and with the news and everybody hearing about what's happening in Hartford, that they would have some vague, but you're right. If they don't have an idea of it and they need an explanation, this is a good way to do it. And hopefully it'll get them out there to vote.
And I'm going to tell you, that was one of the things that I think we all have a problem with, is how to get that information out. And we all know, you put it in a paper. What paper do you put it in? People don't get the paper.
Well, I would think around here, the journal, maybe not.
There are people out there, honestly, that have never heard about the concrete, the foundations. So there are people that don't, you know, so it's always been a problem of how to get the information out to people. And that's great that you guys sent it out there, you know, sent it home with everybody.
If you wanted to put the information out, is there something, say Amber could make that, put it out to her channels?
We do.
It actually put it out to all the, I mean, you have at least three town pages.
We do.
They could send it out to, so.
We've done that. We did that before the last public hearing. I put out a, we put out a video out there explaining the process. We did all that, but we connected with Amber, we connected with every type of social media that we can. But we have a large population here that are not, have no idea about social media, so.
That's true, but the last time when you had, you spoke about trying to get, you know, the partisan and all that stuff.
Yes.
And everybody was talking about it. Could you do something like that again?
Sure.
Am I right?
This bit has, has your office been invaded by calls or concerns regarding?
No.
No, not at all, huh?
No, because social media seems to answer all of those questions that people have.
Well, you're not, you're not going to get everyone, but at least the ones that you do get are going to talk to a lot of people, of course.
I think a lot of people might have already heard that there's no increase since Fenton. But I don't think a lot of people have heard what the mill rate increased to me.
I agree.
And I think that's the reason why there isn't a lot of people here and people aren't talking about it. Obviously, once it happened, then you maybe get a lot of calls where.
Yes.
Having social media put all the corrective legislation out.
Sure.
Maybe I'll stop.
That was a very good one, by the way.
Did you mail it out, or did you send it with all the students, or?
We sent it home through the, did we use the Everbridge or Power School on that?
Oh, Power School. We sent it home electronically to parents.
See, and that's.
Concerning paper.
Right, well, it's not just that, but that's the other point of it, too, like putting a full-page ad in, how, you know.
Mary, you're the spokesperson for the whole town. You represent everybody. If you wrote something, you'd all sign on to it.
Sure.
I mean, and put it in, even a letter to the editor.
That's what I was thinking about, Dave. That's what I was thinking about.
We actually don't even have to sign it. I mean, if you wanted to call into the paper or social media or whatever you wanted to do and just say the Board of Education and the Board of Finance, you know, and the Board of Selectmen are all on agreement on this.
Absolutely. That's a good point, Dave.
Your taxes are going up, call your congressman. I don't know. Your taxes are going up, call your congressman.
Yeah.
But what I do is, I will send it to, whenever we come up with something, we'll send it. So if anybody wants to add anything to it and change it before we put names on, but a letter to the editor was, is great. I think that's the best way to do it.
And that's the key, to get the younger people out there voting and, again, they're reading on, they're listening to the news, they're at our workplace. They know what's going on, and they know that we just can't keep it at a zero and have a town grow. It just can't happen, or at least prosper.
The email, is that still at 700 townspeople?
Yeah, I don't know. Our IT director would know how many people are signed on for the email blast. I think it's more, yeah.
More than this?
No, it's not a lot. It's not as tight.
It isn't a lot.
Mary, maybe because we just worked through that letter for our side specifically, if you, if you want either to work with us to.
Absolutely.
So we can kind of use that as a model, and if you felt that it was easy to understand.
Yeah, we did get that feedback from some other people as well, so we'd be happy to. And maybe we can add in there about the revenue issues because of the state. We can add all that in there.
And then we could share it with the Board of Finance before we.
Absolutely. Thank you, girl.
Yeah, I can, I have it on my email, so I can forward it to y'all in the morning. Y'all.
That could be the same letter that is sent to the formal channels and the unofficial channels.
Yeah, once we come up with something, we'll do that. We'll do a letter to the editor. You guys can send it out the same way you did. We'll put it on our email blast. We'll put it on our website. We'll put it out on all of our social media avenues, and we will go from there.
Rick, does the WPCA budget have to go to referendum?
No.
I didn't think so, okay.
None of them do.
It's just something that if they had a question tonight, but other than that, it's what it is.
Yeah, town meeting.
Has to go to a town meeting, but then not referendum.
So we just.
Because it's all self-funded.
Correct. Which really, yes.
Okay. So, everybody have a pretty good idea of that's what we're going to do?
Can I just ask one question? This may not come to pass, and if so, it's a waste of time, but I have been in Hartford lobbying, you know, almost every day last week with fairly significant people, not me, but the people I was with. And we talked to a lot of people in the Appropriations Committee who were high up enough to know what's going on. There is talk that they're going to use that $1.2 billion in the rainy day fund and give back to the towns grants that they withheld earlier, not, maybe not all, but most or some. If that happens, what do we do? Do we adjust the mill rate increase?
Yes, if that happens, Lisa's already thought about that. You saw, well, maybe you didn't see what came through.
No, I didn't see that.
But this is what she did, okay? If it comes through from Hartford, we're looking at .44, okay? If it doesn't, we're looking at 1.85.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
So we've already taken that into consideration.
.44 mill rate, yeah. So what do we, I mean, what happens with the vote?
So when you, when you bring the budgets to vote, you're voting on spending, not what you're getting in.
I'm sorry, no.
So those, when you, when the budgets go to vote, you're voting on the budget, not what the revenues are coming in. So let's say, you know, with the budget as is, it goes in at 1.84 or whatever it's projected. If the monies from the state come in, the mill rate wouldn't be an increase of 1.84. That would be adjusted. You're not voting on what the mill rate's going to be. You're voting on the budget.
Correct. You're voting on the amount of money.
So that can be changed. The mill rate obviously would be altered before.
Because we don't set the mill rate until after the referendum, so if the, if it comes in, even at the time that we're voting, if we are going to get more money, we know for sure we're going to be getting more money. We're only voting on the amount, okay? So we will set the mill rate accordingly if we've got more money in.
Right, because you're only voting on what's the spending.
Correct, yeah.
When is their vote?
Well, they have to adjourn by law on May 9th.
Okay.
They may not be ready. They may have to have, you know, extensive second session sometime in June or something, but.
What do you hear about the May 9th?
Well, they finally, I mean, you talk to them, everybody says, I don't know what's going on. It's total confusion. There's dueling budgets. Republicans put one in, the Democrats put one in. But if you talk to them upfront, you know, and you, we did, and some people we knew we could trust, they were saying that there's an increasing understanding, the burden on the cities and towns was tremendous. And it hit everybody, and, you know, there's a backlash coming if they keep doing that. So rather than put the money into a fund like Malloy wanted to do to either pay off some of the pension obligations or increase in transportation, they're thinking about giving that money back directly to the town. And with an election coming up, I mean, anybody who could go back home and say, here it is, we've got the money now, he'd go be heroes. So I would, I think there's a real good chance that's going to happen. The only reason they haven't used it so far is because of that rule this past eight years ago, which had to do with money that might come in, you know, they couldn't count on the money from the hedge funds. But now when they have it in their hand, it's not speculation. They've got the money in the bank. And more and more, especially in the cities, they're really complaining about the cuts.
There was a big article. There was a big article in the paper about it, in the journal about it, saying.
Well, tonight, I didn't see it.
Yeah, and it's been this week, on and off, in different papers, different articles, that looks like all of the towns are complaining so bitterly that they just might open it up.
You know, just one, one other thing to think about. When the Commission on Fiscal Stability and Economic Growth was created, I went to every meeting but one, the one at Yale. They talked about what are towns going to do? They're talking about passing off increasingly first 20%, then maybe 30%, then after 50% of teacher retirement obligations and all that. And these are 14 private sector billionaires and billionaires, really. And their answer was, there's too many cities and towns in a small state, 169. Somebody said, well, what's the optimal number? I don't know if it was right at the minutes, but somebody on the board said probably 45 to 50. But that's not going to come to pass. People aren't going to stand for that. I mean, we have never done it. It's not the tradition of the state somewhere. But that's what they were thinking of, that kind of consolidation.
So would some towns, for their budgets right now, hope that the funding will come through, the revenues will come through, and then they bank on that and then do a, you know, go with that, and then if they don't, then they have to do a supplemental bill? Is that?
I've been studying it, I mean, as much as I could. I don't have all 169 towns, but I've been reading three different newspapers, three different regions. Most of them went ahead like we're doing now.
They're waiting.
And they tax, assuming they're not getting any money, because it's so close to the deadline.
They did it last year. It's great.
If they go into a special session, who knows, you know? We just have to get the money in, so they're doing what we're doing now.
And that's exactly what we did last year. We went ahead with the budget. Everybody else, you know, Tallad was behind and everything else. We went ahead with the budget. We're going to do it this year, too, and whatever happens, happens. We'll deal with it. But that's, I think it's the only way to go. We want to have a budget in place. We've got to be able to pay our bills in July, and this is the only way we can do it.
And we're dealing with the same thing with the state. I mean, we just can't get a straight answer.
I'm sorry?
We're dealing with the same thing with the state. We just can't get straight answers from them about.
I can't even hear them to call me back.
Yeah, they're like, well, until the legislative session's over, we can't give you an answer. Well, that doesn't help the town and the Board of Finance have big decisions if you can't give us numbers.
If we budgeted for the shortfall we expect, and they came through and gave us the money.
Yes.
Some of that money would help us offset this year's losses, plus we'd have an additional amount there, maybe not necessarily to go back to wants and needs again, but anticipate for the future that, hey, next year, there's probably going to be an increase. We can make it up with that taxed amount.
That's right.
You know what I mean? So in other words, if you taxed too much this year based upon that, if that happened, that could help the next couple of years, so you don't have to do it. You know, we're taking other things, or you have that thing where all of a sudden, you got paid into the teacher retirement. You know, there's a lot of things that that could go for that could happen.
You're absolutely right, Steve.
Or 200 more houses with crumbling foundations.
Well, you know it's going to continue to happen, and.
I'm sorry?
You know that's going to continue to happen with the foundation, and that's, our grant list is not going to grow. That's where, we talked about it at the last meeting, that we really don't have an engine of growth in this town.
That's right. Well, hopefully, with the economic development, I know that they're having joint meetings and they're all working together. Hopefully, we'll bring some businesses in, which would be wonderful.
But it's not going to happen overnight.
No, it's not easy.
I mean, we've, we've been on a train wreck for years, you know, and the state and the crumbling foundations that just, you know, within the last two years, I mean, we were, the town, we were stable. We were doing good. We were holding our own, but this deal with the state and these crumbling foundations has really hurt us. But we've been on a train wreck for years because our grant list isn't growing. My taxes on my house in the last 19 years has doubled. My income hasn't doubled. Nobody's income has doubled in 20 years. But this is the way we've been running the town, and it's, it's very irresponsible. You know, we go back, and I don't want to pick on the schools, but we go back every year and say, you can't go any lower. You can't go any lower. The town suffers, suffers, and suffers. You know, I've said it before, we've got three times the amount of fields to maintain as we did in the 80s. We've got six or eight guys less in our Parks Department. They've cut staff. Everybody's answer is cut employees. That's not the answer, because guess what happens? The public suffers. But yet, then we go back to the school side. We say, oh, we can't have any suffering, and I'm not picking on the schools, but what I'm saying is, we keep saying we can't do anything. We had a study done six years ago on the schools, talked about closing one school. Would have been a savings. Nobody wants to make the hard decisions that need to be made. And I'm not saying I want to hurt anybody, you know? I was first selectman. I was here to hurt anybody, you know, I was for selectmen, I was here for all 12,000 people, but there's, there's tough decisions that are going to have to be made, because economic development's not going to happen overnight. You know, the, the WPCA, you know, the state of the plant, at some point, that's going to have to be addressed, you know? You know, so these are all bills that are here, and we can't just keep taxing the people. Like I said, my taxes have doubled, you know, nobody else's salaries have doubled, and I'm sure most of your taxes have pretty much doubled too, so it's, it's taxing everybody. And our income of our residents, you know, isn't, you know, our demographics isn't the best either, so we don't have, you know, what we had 20 years ago, when Stafford was the least expensive town in town in county. I won't say we're the most expensive, but we're right up there now with the rest of them on an even playing field. You know, so we, you know, we're on a train wreck, and we need to really think about it. Not to, not to be doing a boom, but it is serious.
So get going.
All right, well...
I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, what, for that letter, we should include something about people being able to contact their legislator, or what, like, what number...
I don't know how everybody feels, but I would say that. If, if you're really unhappy, the complete tax increase this year is the responsibility of the state, I mean, we didn't cut the money, they, they did it to us, and there was no advance warning. Malloy came up in the spring with this idea of passing off some of the teacher retirement money out to the local communities, and I know why they did it, because in some communities, they let the, the salaries skyrocket, and the state would be stuck with the pension of that person forever, you know, as long as the person lived, and here in Darien or West Hartford or Simsbury, so you don't care what, you know, what administrators and teachers are making, so they thought this would be a way of disciplining these people, but what Rick said is right, I mean, a small community without an industrial base and, and just trying to maintain what it has, it's going to be a tremendous burden. So I would say, you know, deflect the thing, not at us, we did the best we could, I think we honestly did the best we could, but if they have that feeling that it's unfair, then they should argue that Hartford should, you know, rethink the cuts that have been made to cities and towns, and they should take in other factors, especially when they, we know that part of the reason we got penalized is because we had a decent surplus, I mean, a responsible surplus. Somebody goes broke in Hartford, and they, and I, I'm for the Hartford bailout, because you can't have a capitalist city that's a slum area, but, but I, you know, what happened there was, the towns that were responsible fiscally got penalized more than the ones that were in debt, and that made it even worse. And, and we are stuck with, this is a private sector problem, this crumbling foundations, it should have never happened, it's unbelievable that it could go on that long, you know, nobody knew anything about it, and it's devastating for the people who are into it, everybody has to help a lot of it, but that really does hit us right in the face, I mean, if you realize that the number's going to keep increasing, and those people who downgrade, you know, we downgrade in terms of their tax assessments, that's lost revenue to the town, we're really up against it, you're right about that, I mean, it's unquestionable. But one final thing, I just want to, but the education system, I would argue this until I die, the kids today are going to have the hardest time finding a job and having benefits and being able to support a family than anybody in America has been had in a modern period. They need a good education, and our town can be proud of what they've accomplished. 20 years ago, I was coaching for the school system, it wasn't very good, and you looked at the number of people graduating and everything, it was a second-rate operation. They've gone so far, and it helped, it's going to help these kids to, to, you know, be successful, and they'll, as taxpayers, they'll pay more in the future. I, I don't think you can, you can't give the kids less than we had. How are you going to turn around and look at your grandchildren or your kids and say, "Well, we had this," but you're not going to have it. That would be, to me, the last resort, I mean...
See, I would say put them in tech school, because we need electricians, we need plumbers, we need mechanics.
Yeah, well, some of them are.
Every, every single one of those kids could be making six-figure salaries within five or six years of getting out of high school, every single one of them. We have such a...
You know, I'm in favor of that too, I, you know, absolutely, I think, you know, a lot of people will go in that direction, and, and that's good, but you still need a basic education in math and reading, and you need to be able to do that, right?
Well, with the, with the price of colleges right now and universities, it's astronomical for these kids to go on school.
$200,000, and you get a...
My grandson's looking at $70,000 a year.
A bachelor's degree in political science or art or...
Political science.
He's got to make a decision today.
I wasn't, I wasn't, you know, trying to pick on...
I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, what you're saying is right, we are on a train wreck.
Well, we go, we go through this cycle every year, and like, you know, we go back to that study that was done, I mean, and I've always felt that one school can be closed, we put all the half kids, half-day kids in another school, adjust the schedules, so the half-day buses are all under one place, and adjust the schedules, and put everybody else up on the, up on the hill, close one school. Those are tough decisions that have to be made, but every year we go through a budget process, and it's like, we made it, we kicked the can down the road, and I'm not advocating, because everybody freaks out when you talk about it, but we have a study done, and this is the problem with this town. We have studies done all the time, and nobody wants to take the advice of the professionals that are telling us what we can do to grow the grant list, what we can do to save money, because we decide we're smart. We pay money for professionals to do something, and then we don't urge their advice. Or is it just changed, and people can't deal with it? I mean, that's really the... We, we've done it for years, we spend money for, for studies, then we don't take people's